I'll call to order the meeting for the Board of Franklin County Commissioners for Wednesday, November 29, 2017. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, Commissioners. Let's pray. Lord, we've come through this time of thankfulness and hopefully we continue that on through the Christmas season and whole year of reaching out, helping each other, being thankful for all that we have. We can be thankful for the great county that we live in here in Franklin County and for those who do the work of the county, our Commissioners and all the staff and everybody. We just left them up. Want to pray for our first responders, Sheriff, Police, EMS and all fire departments that reach out and help us when we need it. Had recently had a need myself for EMS and I was glad they were there. So, we're thankful for that. Thank you for the beautiful place that we live, for those who keep it beautiful. And, Lord, we just pray that as the Commission meets each time, that they continue to have wisdom and that they can continue to look for, look at the citizens of our great county and see what we can do to improve what we do and how we take care of each other. Lord, we thank you for each one. I want especially this morning, lift up our jail staff. They've been working hard and I worked with them throughout the week and, Lord, I just want to lift them up and ask you to give them a special touch as they do the work they do with our inmates. Just watch over us, watch over everything that we do. And, Lord, be with each of our families and protect us, be with our kids in school and the teachers. And, Lord, just give us a great time and as we're blessed, help us to reach out and bless others. And we ask that, in Christ's name, amen. Next up is Correspondents' Organizational Business, first of which would be to receive an update regarding the Food Policy Council and Pathways Grant. Morning, Aaron.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. So, we, Sheila and I, we're going to kind of tag-team this. About a year ago, and it's probably been more than a year ago by now, we kind of gave an update, a yearly update of what the Food Policy Council has been up to. And then with our new initiative, the Pathways Grant, we, it's been a year in, so we also kind of wanted to clump that together because some of the things are similar that we work on, similar thoughts and so forth. First off, though, I thought, I wanted to kind of give some background and framework perspective to kind of better understand our approach as we go about our pathways work, as we go about our food policy work. And really, all, it's really the backbone, if you will, of our thought and our belief of the work that we take, do at the Health Department as well. So, first off, I think it's important to kind of just have a little definition. So, really, what, understanding what health is, it's really more than just the absence of disease. Sometimes we think about, well, I'm healthy, I don't, I'm not sick. But really, it encompasses our whole person, our physical, our mental and our social well-being. So then we think about, you can turn to the next slide, Derek, thanks. So, how really is optimal health achieved and what really impacts our health? So, I like this little quote because it encompasses, it's more than just our behaviors, it's more than just our choice, because there's things that impact our behaviors and impact our choice, if you will. So, it's, it's really the forces that are behind our social, cultural and physical environment as well. So, you can turn to the next slide as well. So, kind of understanding that, that little definition and knowing that, again, it's more than just our behaviors that impact our health. This is our, it's a model that really drives the framework under which our health promotion is really based upon. And, again, which our work from Pathways and the Food Policy Council is really based on. So, looking at that, really to, this comes from understanding that, really knowing that lasting impact on health outcomes is more than just patient care, it's part of that, but also it's a broader perspective as well. It's looking at community-wide approaches that are aimed at improving population health. So, this is really going to impact people where they live, learn, work, worship and play, really. And so, that's really, especially with Pathways and our other work, where we're definitely moving towards. And when we are affecting people at those places where they're already at, that's really going to have the greatest impact on, on helping keeping people healthy. So, with this public health impact pyramid, this kind of shows the potential impact of different types of public health interventions. So, we have a smaller impact at the top because that's more individual with just like individual counseling, education, that's important, but it is a less of an impact and it actually takes more effort from the people, the practitioners, the people who are delivering that education, that counseling. And then as we move on down, we have a greater impact because this is affecting more of the population. It actually has less effort on those who are delivering that. So, really, as we work through this and want to have the greatest impact, we're really trying to work through, and, again, our work with Pathways, with the Food Policy Council is more so in that changing the context and, and looking at those social determinants, which would be like poverty and those kinds of things, which are really big issues that take policy to kind of change and move those. And it's a slower process, but it definitely has a bigger impact overall. So, again, all of these levels are important, but we, again, we just have a larger impact overall and that's kind of more of our focus as we move on. You can go on the next slide, Derek, thanks. And one other thing, just to understand that, a lot of our work does focus on three areas. And these three are risk factors, which are tobacco use, physical inactivity and poor eating or poor eating habits. These three risk factors, they contribute to four chronic diseases, which are kind of circled up there and it's kind of a little hard to read, they're smaller, but heart disease, diabetes, some cancers, and then also pulmonary respiratory issues. These four chronic diseases, they contribute to 80% of all deaths in the United States. So, again, we can, we can impact those three areas. We can make changes in society, in our environment, to help change those things. So, again, we're working on changing the context and addressing those social determinants and it does really take all of us, it's not just from the public health perspective, but it's also with education and in business and in agriculture and in our environment as well, to really encompass and affect and have positive change in overall health. So, with that, understanding that, you do have a little handout in front of you and I'll just kind of highlight, I'm going to kind of highlight a little bit of the food policy happenings in the last year. And then Sheila, our Coordinator for Pathways, is going to highlight some of those as well. I just wanted to really highlight for Food Policy Council, we actually had the opportunity and it was a really great opportunity to go out into the county and we did 10 focus groups kind of last year and the beginning of this year. And from that, so, again, it was all of our smaller communities as well, north and south, plus in Ottawa, and really trying to get a picture of what's important as far as food policy issues, as food access issues to our population. And from that, we had three priority areas. One's education. So, again, if we go back to our pyramid, that's more at the top and we have done some things there with, we looked at handing out, one thing that was identified is that a lot of times in, with food distributions that occur in our county, they may have foods available but not really knowing what to do with them. So, we've organized and actually partnered with ECAN to have some recipe distributions and just kind of helping encourage some of those maybe less-known ingredients to be used and how to use those. And then I had the great privilege, actually, Commissioner Dunn, I got to work with your wife, Deb, on a really great project with the Farm Bureau and the Health Department and the Food Policy Council. We conducted a cooking class and will continue this as well. We worked with the Ripples of Change Group and so those with, looking, those are in poverty that are wanting to come out of poverty and giving those tools. And food preparation, budgeting and those kinds of things are really something that they voiced, that have maybe some challenges with, so we tried to help a little bit with that. And then we also focused on farmers' markets, that's more kind of of changing the context if we look at our pyramid. And helping to start and actually, we last, two years ago, helped to start the Pomona Farmers Market, but just with, helped with advertising and kind of moving that along this year to be successful. And then Wellsville also started a farmer's market as well, so collaborated with the City of Wellsville on those efforts. And then also, this is kind of a work in progress and that's that bigger picture that takes time, but looking at ways to improve food access to our smaller communities that don't really have much of anything, if, if nothing, to buy fresher foods, more local fresh food, healthy foods. So, that's something we're looking at. One thing might be a mobile market, but, again, that's just kind of a, a work in progress that hopefully in the next year to come, we'll have some more, more to go with that. So, I'll just stop. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take that and if not, we'll have Sheila come up and give you a quick update about what's been happening with Pathways, so.
On your classes, what kind of turnout did you have?
Sure. So, those, the Ripples, they are smaller. It's, Ripples has about 10 to 12 participants at any one time, so we particularly targeted that group. So, it was about 10, eight to 10 that we had. And those were families, so they got to be involved as a family as well, which I think is important with the kids as well. So, yeah, any other questions?
All right.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll just turn it over to Sheila then.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Sheila Robertson. As Erin mentioned, I'm the Pathways Grant Coordinator and so that's a part-time contract position that I'm helping the Health Department with. And much of what Erin talked about kind of laid the foundation for what this Pathways Grant is about. It's about working in multiple community sectors and trying to make the healthy choice the easy choice, or the healthy choice the default choice, it's kind of slogan, across three areas, those three areas Erin mentioned, the tobacco reduction, healthy eating and physical activity. So, this is kind of a complex slide, but I just wanted to point out, it's kind of like the pyramid that Erin showed, but in a bit of a rainbow diagram instead. So, there's certainly factors towards the center, age, sex, constitutional factors, then individual lifestyle factors that affect your health. But as you kind of move out in the rainbow, there's that second to last layer, and this is a Blue Cross provided slide, where they really want the Pathways to work in that layer to change the context, to improve likelihood of, of healthy actions. And so, the categories that are listed, they are really correlate to the seven pathways that are part of the Pathways Grant. For example, one of them is agriculture and food production. And so, two of the pathways are to work with food retail. So, there are, there's a process and some incentive funds for grocery stores and, and convenience stores, for actually four of them, to participate and receive some funding to make some changes. Also restaurants, so another thing having to do with food production and there is a process for them to participate, up to 10 restaurants, to receive grants for making changes. Other parts of that, kind of changing the context level, are schools. That is one of our pathways as well. There's grants for up to six, six schools that improve some policies with regard to wellness. Work sites, work environment is another one, like Erin talked about, you know, we want to reach people where they're at. So, these are all examples of where they're already going and changing those environments, tweaking those environments even. So, with work sites, there's an opportunity for 10 work sites to receive $10,000 each when they go through a Work Well Kansas kind of prescribed process that involves having your Wellness Committee participate in some workshops and then identifying some changes that you want to make, again, with regard to one of those three areas, eating, physical activity or tobacco. And I'm glad that Franklin County is actually participating as one of the work sites. If any of you are on the Wellness Committee, you know Erin's been very involved in that. Some of the other work sites, just for your information, that are participating are the City of Ottawa, ECAN, Elizabeth Layton Center, Neosho County Community College and USD 289, which is Wellsville Schools. They have all signed the pledge and participated in two workshops so far and we're looking to, to bring four more work sites kind of up, up to speed so we can realize the benefit of all the grant funds that Blue Cross provides. Then, just continuing around the rainbow with the other pathways, at the top, it sort of overlaps with the title, but it's policymakers. So, one of the pathways is to work at that level of policy, either to pass new policy and/or help to implement policy that will improve one of those health factors. And our committee has chosen to primarily work in the area of active transportation and doing some walkability assessments and implementation in some of the small communities, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a moment. And then just hitting on the other two pathways of the seven total, over to the right, healthcare services, so that's another area where we want to try and change the context. There are incentives in the Pathways Grant for healthcare clinics as well as the hospital to make, make changes along these lines. And then lastly, residents, I wasn't quite sure where to plop it on the diagram because that does a little bit more involve engaging direct individuals to sign a pledge, say that they're going to make change, as opposed to the others that are a little bit more in that system level. So, those are the seven pathways. Just to talk a little bit about how we're doing our work, we have, like I mentioned, kind of the grant coordination team, which is mainly myself, certainly Erin and Mitch participate in that as well from the Health Department staff perspective. We do have an advisory committee that meets monthly and we have representation from Recreation Commission, County, Janet's on that team, City of Ottawa, Extension, a school, ECAN and the hospital. So, that group is involved in kind of reviewing each month, what happened the last month, what's on deck for the next month, how are we looking kind of overall across our three-year plan, what challenges are there? And then they certainly, as individuals and as their organizations, participate in some of this work as well, kind of act as cheerleaders out there in the community, certainly ECAN, you know, being on the committee, they're very, they have a lot of overlapping goals of what we're doing with their community gardens and so forth. So, wonderful group on that committee and all the organizations that they represent. So, we do have a framework of outcomes over the three years that we would like to achieve. It doesn't really matter, I'm not talking too much to this slide this second. And I thought I'd just highlight the outcomes within those three areas, again, healthy eating, physical activity and tobacco. And some of this is, is really more long-term outcomes, not something we're going to achieve in three years. We might not see health changes in three years, but we do hope, you know, over time to increase fruit and vegetable consumption, that's kind of high-level goal. Some of the sub-goals under that are increasing availability of locally sourced food. So, you've seen, Erin mentioned, the farmers' markets is providing more locally sourced food, community garden work, the container garden that's outside your annex here is a bit of a demonstration to maybe give people ideas of what they can start. And then also a school garden that we restarted in Wellsville. Also, a goal is that healthy foods will be perceived as more affordable and that low-income individuals will have additional support for purchasing them. This should all lead to the ultimate goal of increasing consumption. And Erin talked a little bit about that, you know, certainly there's even just education around how to comprise, you know, low-cost, healthy meals, but there's also programs like the SNAP, which is the food stamps. You can work with farmers' markets to accept those so that people could, can use those. In fact, they can sometimes be doubled. So, if it's $1 for something else at a farmer's market or if you spend it on produce, it could be worth $2 and so forth. There are also senior farmer's market vouchers where eligible seniors can get, I think it's $30 a year to spend at farmer's market. So, just trying to kind of raise awareness of those and use of those programs. Of course, we have goals to increase the restaurants that have healthy options and the food retail, specifically even convenience stores, making some healthier options available. So, those are all things that we're working on within food. Within physical activity, our overarching goal, of course, is, would be to increase daily activity levels and be able to realize, you know, see as a community and even economically the health benefits from that. So, some of our sub-goals are to raise awareness around safety issues of, for example, sidewalks or lack of sidewalks and other, you know, shoulders on roads that are maybe designated as bicycle paths and so forth. We have done some work in Wellsville and also Williamsburg, kind of looking at what would help make those communities a little bit more walkable or bikeable. And those were chosen for a couple reasons. First of all, Ottawa is fortunate to have the trails and several, the trails kind of pass through some of the other small towns, but they don't hit Wellsville or Williamsburg, kind of those corners that they're in. And also just some energy and motivation from those communities that were interested in participating in some meetings and doing some of this work around identifying ways to make their communities more walkable and bikeable. So, we are working with them to, you know, identify some changes and then through the Pathways Program, hopefully to fund some of those or help them identify other funding to, to implement changes in their communities. And then lastly, on tobacco, our main goal there right now is to just have more public places that are smoke-free, perhaps starting with the new teen park and then maybe looking at other parks. There is quite a bit of support from the community survey that we've done, that people are interested in having more smoke-free, you know, parks, hospitals, work sites, schools. So, we may look at what we can do there, but not everyone is in agreement with that. There's also in some communities where they're raising the age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21, thinking that that will help and it's been shown that it reduces, you know, adolescent tobacco use, which is a problem in our community. That is a very careful work, that needs to be done over a while if we were, were to pursue that. I think our goal right now is just to kind of gauge the level of support for that. So, we included a question in the community survey, which actually showed there was a fair amount of support. And then we'll be gauging support from convenience stores as well. And then ultimately with tobacco, of course, we want to reduce tobacco use and there is a quit line that we are raising awareness of as well through the healthcare provider, through the healthcare pathway. So, any, I would be happy to answer any questions or talk further about any of those, but the handout that you have does kind of go into the details of what we've done on each pathway this first year a little bit more. Any questions?
Information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, under Correspondents' and Organizational Business, would be to receive an update on Lake Region Resource and Conservation, Bill, Resource Conservation and Development.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, Don.
I am a little late this year getting my reports, but I'll explain. I've got an excuse. I just hope it's a good one. Since I did the newsletter from 2017, you know, I'll kind of go through it quick. Getting specific, you know, where I know you, that would ask a lot of questions later, if you like.
First of all, good morning, Commissioners. A little late with my yearly update from Lake Region RC&amp;D this year. I purposely held off this year and later in my presentation, you understand why I have done so. As you can see, our cover sheet is our 2000, for our 2000 newsletter is made up in industry to our website, which represents six county sponsors, Anderson, Miami, Lynn, Osage, Coffey and Franklin. On the first page of our newsletter, there is a partial list of projects Lake Region's been involved in over the last 44 years. It all started applications submitted to the Secretary of Agriculture and then assisted and authorized us in 1976. The board consists of three individuals, a county commissioner, a conservation district member and a person at large. A few years, the last few years, we've added a fourth position to have an additional person at large when we think there is a need. Rick Howard, Fran Bennett, Dave Beanoff and myself are the four representatives from Franklin County on the board. See, I turned to our first page there, the, one of our ongoing programs is the Owls Project we have over in Paola. This project is an outdoor classroom with easy walking distance from the public schools in Paola. The Owls Program is partially funded by Kansas Wildlife and Parks and Tourism and through other grants. This project is started in 2011 and Mark Peters, which is on our board, pretty well coordinates this. He lives in Paola and he's a Miami County representative and he's a former NRS CS engineer, retired. Okay, you see on the next pages are hunters feeding the hungry. First, I'd like to show you an article, this is an article that was done, Hunting Guide and Coffee in Osage Counties. And there's a really nice, two-page article on our program, Kansas Hunters Feeding the Hungry. Total pounds for last year, you can see, we had 3,595. This was shorter of a record of the year before, 4,000 pounds. This is because Balmwood's Butcher Block, which we helped get reestablished down here, just kind of got in in the middle of the year. So, this year, we think it's going to be a lot bigger. I just got a call yesterday, I got to go down to Mount City, they actually have 1,200 pounds ready for me to pick up and gun season just opened today. So, you know, it's just bow season. Okay, the Lake Region, and the next one you'll see, the Lake Region, RC&amp;D, Kansas Rural Center and the Franklin County Health Department, we sponsored a workshop, Feeding Kansas. It was held in Neosho Community College. Ron Brown, who is the State Chairman of the Farm Food Task Force, gave an update of what the task force worked on with, for 2016. We had about 80 people attended and represented 12 different counties. After the Feeding County Project, Lake Region RC&amp;D was ready to move forward with a project of our own. It started with contacting Ron Brown, which is also President of CCAN RC&amp;D, which encompasses 10 counties to the south of us. And he's also the State Chairman on the Farm Task Force. And we also, after I met with him a few times and we coordinated, we got ahold of Heather Morgan, which is the coordinator of Project 17. Heather spent time working with the Lake Region and CCAN councils that would decide to move forward to apply for a grant. This project will focus on providing technical assistance to small and emergent private agricultural-based businesses in the Project 17 area. We was actually approved two months ago, but Washington DC wouldn't let us announce it. But after two months, they finally said they wasn't going to announce it and rural development doesn't announce what they do. So, we just went ahead and started to move forward with the project. We also contacted, you'll see on one page there, Marlon Bates, which is Executive Director from Douglas County, the Extension Council, and he met and worked with the Lake Region RC&amp;D and he has agreed to help us. He's also head of the Food Policy Council in Douglas County and he has agreed to come down here and help us once we get really started with the project that we have. After being awarded the Rural Development Grant, Ron Brown, Heather Morgan and myself started the framework of beginning of meetings with area people and interested in our efforts. We have already held meetings in Bourbon County, Miami County and will be having a presentation during the Food Policy Council meeting next Tuesday on December the 4th in this room at 12:30. We've invited a lot of different groups to come and Heather will be one of the main speakers, kind of bringing us up to date on where this project's going to go. But I'm sure the first year, basically, what we'll be doing the first year, we'll be establishing local food producer inventory, creating local food directory for each county, organizing stakeholder meetings to solicit interest in the regional food system and the list goes on and on. But basically, what we'll be doing the first year is just, there won't be any, the only monies that actually will be awarded for any kind of anything, there is $16,000 billed to the grant for working with the Certified Kitchen with K-State in Olathe. And we have already sent some people up there from Miami County, just to want, they want to be more educated on their product and labeling and different things, aspects, laws they have to adhere to and so forth. Okay. Okay, Adopt a Bike Program's been a program we've had, just ongoing for years and years. Franklin County's always been a big part. The brochure that I'm giving you today, we were awarded this year a Kansas Power and Light Grant, and one of the things, we're working with the Solid Waste Authority, which I am a member of, and Colleen Lopez is the new coordinator, you guys all have a chance to meet. She actually, I heard about this grant, so I got with her, met with her, and she applied for the grant with the permission of the Solid Waste Authority, and we were approved for a $1,000 grant, and it was more, less, the first year of promotions and literature, and it was going to pay for one extra trip going to Ellsworth. You'll see in there, there'll be a picture, a kind of an update from that. It says 7,000. We've actually taken 7,500 bikes out to Ellsworth now and brought back pretty close to 3,000. And also, Colleen's working on, for it's also, as we speak, a Walmart facility grant and an MFA grant, oil company, so hopefully we'll get a little more help there. Last, November 19th in Wichita, I attended the state RC&amp;D meeting. I was re-elected the state president for a four-year term. One of the main discussions of the state RC&amp;Ds is ongoing different directions that we can go and lack of grant funding for water and soil projects. I spoke earlier about our partnerships with CCAN and Project 17. With the Rural Development Grant, another grant our RC is looking at, is the HEERO Planning Grant, which they have in one of the RC&amp;Ds that I represent in northwest Kansas. The HEERO Planning Grant, that they were granted, and we're looking into it now. It is a HEERO Plant Project, it's a regional food system. HEERO stands for Healthy Eating and Rural Opportunities. Western Perry RC&amp;D in northwest Kansas, it just completed this program. Funding for this project was provided by the Sunflower Foundation in Topeka and based on the, just people donating money to it. It's not government taxpayer money. It's individuals that just want to see things better. And also, I've been invited to attend the national meeting in Minnesota next year, and they've asked me tentatively to give a presentation on all the projects that we're doing here in Kansas to promote local foods. I just kind of spit it out there. I know you guys are, long morning this morning. Have any questions? Like I said, something we work with too on the bikes deal, every county I have contacted, and I know Janet's been doing it for a few years, they adopt a family or two, and we always provide bicycles for that. We work with ECAN, Hope House, my father's house in Paola, and we have a lot of people donate to us bikes too that are still in pretty good shape, that we don't haul out to Wellsville, out to Ellsworth. We actually keep them here. I know Chamber Commerce is involved from Wellsville now. Over the Road Gang Cars Club is involved in this project also, and we just have a lot of people, outside people that are, and hopefully the more we find out about the grant as it goes forward on the Rural Development Grant, I hope you guys are invited to come, I'm sure. Ladies have no problem with the county commissioners showing up in their own room. So it will be next Tuesday at 4:00, at 12:30, that's the 4th.
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, I'm sorry, I said Tuesday, didn't I? Yeah, December 4th though.
Yes.
Our meetings, RC&amp;D meetings are on Tuesday, that's where I got that confused. If you don't have any other questions, hopefully I can come back with more news of what we've done for the grant to help the 17 counties promote the small agricultural ideas and planning and moving forward. So, I'll talk to you today. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items. At this time, discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Scott Yergin.
Well, I'm a little nervous speaking to such luminaries.
If you state your name and address for the commission.
So I am Scott Yergin, and I live at 2263 Nevada Road here in the county. I live in the southeast part of the county. And I'm here with some bait. I'm trying to encourage you all to take a free lunch on December 6th in Paola. So I am a member of the Merida Sane Regional Advisory Committee for the Merida Sane Watershed, and this advisory committee is really part of the Kansas Water Office. And so for the last several years, the Kansas Water Office with the Regional Advisory Committee, Larry Walrod is also a member of this committee. We have analyzed the state of the water resources in the Merida Sane, there are 13 counties in Kansas, eastern, this part of Kansas, that have watersheds in the Merida Sane River. So I think our basic thesis is there is really a dim future to these 13 counties, including Franklin County, without a, some kind of reasonable assessment of the quantity of water available and the quality of water available for the citizens in these counties in the future. So we are able to put a metric to the available water and where that available water kind of intersects with projected population growth. And so at this luncheon on December 6th in Paola, at the Paola City, let's see, what is this? What is it? Let me see. It's in Paola at 11. Just a second. Paola Town Square. So I think Joy told me, Commissioner Renault, that you were planning to come to this, and so what I, so what, so I nominated each of you as a potential, trying to woo you to Paola on December 6th, and the bait is lunch, and the cost is tuning your ears in to speakers from the Kansas Water Office as regards water resources in Franklin County and the surrounding 12 other counties in the Merida Sane Watershed area. So if, so I invited Blaine Finch also, and Blaine hasn't responded. Some, so maybe Karen Tyson would be there, Kevin Jones, and so there are about 40 or 50 people who have accepted invitations. I nominated to the Kansas Water Office all five of you, and so if I could, if any of the other four of you would be interested in going, and you would let Joy know, say by the end of the day, then I'll call Joy in the morning and we can get a sense of the lunch totals in Paola. So the thesis is we would rather avoid the situation of John Redman, $15 million in state bonds sold there to dig out 3 million cubic yards of mud out of John Redman. The Pomona Reservoir, 24% to 25% silted in, and that's our future. And so the thesis is it's cheaper to remediate soil erosion than it is to dig mud out of the reservoirs. So at this meeting, we'll talk about the future of water in Kansas, in this Merida Sane Regional Watershed area with regard to quality and quantity, and the idea is that water is both a capital resource and a natural resource, and we need them both. So I thank you, and if you, so I'll, I think I've passed my five minutes. So Commissioner Renault, I'm going over to that meeting in Paola, and Joy has my name, and so I'd be glad to ride with you, take you over. So the luncheon, or the meeting starts at 11, winds up at 1. The bait is lunch, and if any of the others of you would like to come, if you would let Joy know by the end of the day, and I will have a sense of the numbers, and I'll tell Bobby Luke John over at the Kansas Water Office. So I appreciate your attention, and I don't think I want to trade jobs with any of you. So any questions for me?
I'll give you a ring if I need to.
Oh, good, good, yes. I'll drive over and be nice to visit with you. I'll certainly try to, if we don't ride over together, I'll sort of tap on you at the meeting, so. Good, and I'm glad you're coming. Thank you very much, thank you.
Next up is our consent agenda. The consent agenda today would include consider approving minutes from our November 8th meeting, and our study session on the 13th, and our November 27th study session, that is a study session, right?
Yes.
13th and 27th are study sessions?
We didn't.
We didn't have that.
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, meeting on the 8th, and study session on the 13th and 27th of November. Claim vouchers in the amount of $533,200.32. Tax change orders, one of them, for net amount of negative $457.68. Payroll, an amount of $1,136,564.25, for the period of October 21 through November 20. And longevity, as well as longevity payroll. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Make a motion we approve the consent agenda, it's read. Is there a second? Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
First item of business is consider for approval EMS activity reports.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have three months of activity reports to share with you. We'll start with August. 270 calls in August, averaging 8.71, bringing us to 2,445 calls, which was 138 calls over where we were at in August of 2016. Very good deposits of 119,348.64, bringing us to deposits 817,391.51, $7,600 from where we needed to be by the end of the year. So revenues continue to look pretty good up to that point. We did have adjustments of $60,037.84. We sent $24,239.44 to the state set-off program and $1,359 to Midwest Collections and service fees of $149,260.75. We did have 16 move-ups. The last page, or page five, is the activity report. 120 patients were transported to ransom. We transported a total of 182 patients. We did have 42 refusals for a refusal rate of 15%, which I thought was really well, really good for August. Any questions on the August report? And we'll just jump right into the September. We had 277 responses, an average of 9.23 calls a day, 2,722 calls for the year, which is 111 higher than 2016. We had deposits of 48,451.09. I will tell you that that will, the rest of those will be picked up over the next three months. We did have two weeks where we didn't bill, so those will come back up. We had adjustments of $23,744.54. We sent $25,141.90 to the set-off, $4,401.09 to Midwest Collections, service fees of $137,803.70, and 15 move-ups. In the month of September, we did transport 132, 72% of our patients went to Ransum Memorial. We also transported 183 patients that month. We did have 60 refusals for a 21% refusal rate. One thing to remember about September, that's tractor show, that's, we have quite a few refusals, that kind of stuff, at our standbys with the tractor show, the car show, and those things, so you will see those reflected in September. Any questions on September? October, we had 270 responses, averaged 8.71, bringing us to 2,292 calls. We, that was only 52 calls over where we were at in 2016. So you can see, for the some reason, the last couple of months, our call volumes have dropped off compared to the previous years. We did have deposits of 90,215.70, bringing us to 956,058.30 for year-to-date deposits, which is 131,058.30 over what we estimated at the 825,000. I will here in a minute break that down and show you the education fees and that. We had adjustment rate of $63,965.46. State set-off fees, we sent 14,686.82 to the state set-off, 2,817.60 to Midwest Collections, and had 141,136.0 in service fees. We did do 22 move-ups that month. 122 patients out of 174 were transported to a local hospital. As you can tell, just to touch base, our nursing home transports, that kind of stuff, we have really seen a monster drop in those over the last year. I don't know if the nursing homes were taking more of their patients, keeping them, but what you like, what we see more so in the nursing home, I also group psychiatric facilities into that, so your KU psych facilities, the ones that are farther away, the St. John's, or we do one that's all the way down in Fredonia that we've transported patients to, so more of those patients we're seeing, those, I got named nursing homes, but those are transports anything other than hospitals, and you're seeing we're transporting a lot of patients farther away for psychiatric care, since the Elsawadme State Hospital doesn't have the beds they used to have. So you'll see quite a bit more of that, I have a feeling. We did have 57 refusals with a 21% refusal rate. So honestly, the revenues and stuff are coming in very good. If you look at the last page, I kind of broke down our budget so you can see exactly where our revenues come from. 916,415.05 is actually service fees, so our budget is 825, excuse me, thousand dollars, so we're 91,415.05 over what we estimated for service fees, which with insurance and all the unexpected things that can happen, we are doing really good. When we started our community education position, community paramedics, and we talked about that our education being able to bring in 25,000. To date this year, we're at 29,400, or to the end of October, we're at 29,435, which is $4,435 over what we said we were going to be. And with bringing Olahtha on with a contract for them to teach paths to their entire hospital, I see next year that being even better, so good things are coming from our education department. The educational reimbursements with our training center for The educational reimbursements with our training center for ACLS and ELS, we have a lot of different hospitals, agencies underneath us for the CPR version and the ACLS portion. We have to buy the statute that we have to purchase all of the cards and that kind of stuff and send them out. So with the reimbursement, we'll, you'll see us out of our education line item, buy all that. It goes back into reimbursement. So there's really no, you'll see it in our fees because that's how we document it, but it's also there's 10,208.25 that we had to purchase and then bill back out for these services. American Heart Association just threw a curve ball at us. Used to the cards that we had to purchase were $3 apiece and then the agencies were responsible for buying the books. Since American Heart Association has not gotten the money from the books because the certain, the agencies weren't buying them, they've now raised the price of the cards to $17 and dropped the books down to $3.50. So to buy a CPR card now for the layperson is $17, which is, we've got a tree service here that's got over 500 employees that they do CPR for. So we're working with them trying to figure out a different route because they don't have to have American Heart Association to be able to get that to cover them under their insurance, but not be spending a lot of money. So that's one of the recent things we're dealing with. American Heart Association on so they can get the money they, they feel they need. I think that's everything I've got right now. So is there any questions on any of the stuff?
Nick, is a lot of your refusals same people over and over?
We don't see them as much as often, but a lot of them are lift assists, that kind of stuff. And we break that down in the, in the call type report. If you look on, on October, the second page, you can see on page, first one is. On the call type where it says sick calls, that's how we document our lift assists because they come in through dispatch of the sick caller. You can see just in October, we're up 10 calls for that. To kind of prevent that or work towards fixing that, our community paramedic Cindy Casey, she's got a program out called stepping on program, which is for anybody's, I think it's 65 and over, it might be 60 and over to come in. We work in conjunction with the hospital to talk about how medications can affect your walking or day to day, different devices. One of the big things we see with our falls are people who have the lift assist chairs and the rug in front of them that they've had in front of their chair for years and it's a hardwood floor and it becomes a slipper slide. So really getting out and trying to defer that, which those are down a lot over the last few years with us being able to get out and talk to them, but it's a never ending battle. And the other thing we're seeing is the psych. And I'm sure Jeff could talk to that. We've got different programs that we've worked together on and our patients that are, got some kind of psych problems, emergencies that we go out to over and over again, or a lot of refusal rates too. So we're, we're looking at a lot of different ways to defer that, but those are the things that we're doing.
There are no more questions for Nick? Need to approve the September, August, September and October activity reports, which include the financials, set offs and write offs included in those reports. Is there a motion to approve those activity reports?
Make that motion, Mr. Kelly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Second item of business is continuation of what we talked about Monday, the purchase and implementation of new Wi-Fi modems for the ambulances and captains vehicles.
This item, as you said, we discussed on Saturday, oh, sorry, on Monday in pretty good detail. It, just a quick overview, currently we use commercial grade hotspots that are not made to operate the 24 hours a day. They don't have extra antennas. They don't give us good service throughout the whole county. Working with different cell phone providers, US Cellular's been able to come in at a savings of $1,700 a year to switch from Verizon over to them, plus been able to get us connected with Source Incorporated of Kansas, which has got us to Cradle Point, $1,104,679 apiece, which the outright cost of those is 899 if you go buy them. So they've been able to come in significantly other bids for a total price of $5,164.08 and that's four external antennas and four six devices. So this will help us with the computer aided dispatching that we have now, which we utilize to go unseen on our calls, to get call notes while responding to calls. The point of this is to hopefully eliminate some of the work of dispatchers so they don't have to import all of our information. We can push buttons and that puts us on the scene and all that. Is there any questions that you guys have had over the last couple of days?
This also gives you the greater capability to send cardiac data.
Yes.
Where you might not have that capability in blackout areas or, or low, low reception areas.
Exactly, because we do all of our heart monitors, hook up to Wi-Fi and transmit the cardiac data to the cardiologist with that. Yes, sir.
Is that $1,700 savings just a projection?
That's pretty much accurate. Right now, we pay just for the hotspots in the EMS trucks, we pay 319.92 a month. With the US Cellular for the hotspots, which we're looking at here, plus the ones that are in mine in my assistance vehicle, we'll pay 225.60 a month. So that's a savings of $94 a month that we'll have there. We do have one cell phone for the captains to use, so the hospital can call and that kind of stuff for transfer. With Verizon, we pay 52.28. With US Cellular, we'll pay 28.20, which is a savings of 24. The health department and emergency management also have a hotspot. They're, they're $39 a month and we're getting them for 28. So for the yearly savings for them will be 141.48 and our total will be the remainder of that. So that's guaranteed price throughout with them. So that's pretty accurate savings.
There's no other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the purchase and implementation of the new Wi-Fi modems for the ambulance department?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Nick, our third item of business, consider purchasing a road milling machine attachment.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Discuss this Monday at study session unless you have developed questions since then, the request would be a motion approving the purchase.
What was the timeline for delivery on this?
Four weeks.
Four weeks, okay.
No other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to purchase the 16 inch fine toothed Road Hog road milling machine, amount of $18,500 for the public works department?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you. Fourth item of business is a contract for law enforcement services with the city of Pomona.
Yeah, you may recall, certainly you will recall that this is a contract that we do annually, at least as far back as I have been here. You may recall that we already did this earlier this year. When we sent that over to Pomona, a review decided, the reason being we increased the cost of the service, I believe it was approximately 8% and that was to account for increased personnel costs over, I believe over a year period. So for the last four years, we haven't increased it at all. And in looking at this and discussing it with our HR director as well as Jeff, we thought we would increase the cost as our personnel costs have increased. Well, it was too much of an increase for them, so we went back to the drawing board. I talked to Sheriff Richards. He indicated to me that it is a service that in a contract that he supported wanted to remain in. So I met with the mayor of Pomona and we agreed on a two and a half percent increase. That is what's before you today. The contract will go into effect in January. I don't believe anything else has changed. They have already signed it, so we support it and today we're just asking for your signature. Jeff is here, if you have any questions about the services.
Have they been without services out there for a while, Joe?
No. We are, we are currently under our 27th contract and we have been continuing providing their services and what they, what we do is a dedicated 40 hours of actual patrol time every week and then by the, and then we also respond to any calls for service that take place over in the city of Pomona. The contract allows, it allows for us to have the dedicated time and then it also allows us to enforce city ordinances, which by statute we could not without the contract. So that's kind of where we are on it.
So what we talked about earlier is for 2018 contract. Typically, does the same person go there? I know you have them all listed as being there, but is it same, pretty much the same group of people or is it just totally random?
It is. Each shift has to put in so many hours and they divide that up by, with different people. We, we thought that that was part of the, that that makes it for a better response because different people patrol different styles and they might view things a little differently. So I believe it gives them a little bit extra, better coverage that way by having multiple people that do it. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the contract for services, law enforcement services between the sheriff's office, Franklin County and city of Pomona?
I'll make that motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Fifth item of business would be to consider participating in a rate stabilization program for 2018 with the county's insurance carrier.
Yeah, the documentation in front of you frankly kind of speaks for itself and I can walk through that if need be, but this is a rate stabilization program whereby if we agree to a three year contract with K-CAM, they will cap the maximum increase at a certain percentage and that's based on loss ratios. I think this is a no brainer for the county. I spoke with the administrator at K-CAM and we know we're not going to sustain any increase next year and entering into this agreement will cap us at no more than 5% for the years thereafter. And just given kind of the unpredictability of, we're a large organization and we can't control acts of nature for employees who, you know, negligently destroy county equipment or equipment that gets hurt otherwise. And so we want to make sure we have some kind of cap in place on this. So K-CAM's been good to us. I don't see any reason why we would change in the next three years, so I do support executing.
We're committing to stay a customer for three years.
They talked about this at the K-CAM meeting at the KAC conference and it's a good deal I think for the county.
Well, part of it too is that Mayor's mentioning and is the documentation, they also pay us, we're eligible to receive a contribution credit of $21,694 that we wouldn't otherwise receive unless we sign this. So that amount will be reduced off of our 2018 rate, so it's, it's a good deal.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve participating in the 2018 K-CAM rate stabilization program agreement?
I'll make a motion, we approve the K-CAM 2018 rate stabilization program agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. That brings us to staff reports.
I don't have a lot for you today. We have a board retreat coming up on the 11th and we're still refining the agenda for that. I hope to have it to you all. Certainly we'll have a draft of it next week. We talked about the tax sale a little bit on Monday. Proximity Park is coming well out there. Acquisition's going well. We've made tremendous progress over the last couple of weeks, so pleased with that.
You'll be requesting an executive session here later too. Okay. All right. Sheriff, you have anything you'd like to add? Nope. Nick, anything? Nope. Jim, Janet? All right. That brings us Commissioners' comments and Board reports.
I have not been to anything since the last meeting.
Good. The only thing that we attended was the Kansas Association of Counties meeting at Overland Park and it was informative, at least to me. I thought there were some, some very good breakout discussion groups that took place there and it was a lot of good information, so.
Roy? I went to the area agency on aging board meeting yesterday. The agency had a cyber breach about three months ago that no, as far as I know, no personal information was, was hacked, but it's basically a hack where you install some kind of software where it locks up your ability to gain access to software that you need to gain yourself. And I think we heard in the news recently, several companies have been paying ransom to get their computers unlocked so they can use their computers. So anyway, they hired a cyber expert to come and evaluate their firewalls and security measures and change that all around. It's taken about three months to get everything back in order and they're going to review the policy, the HIPAA policy and civil rights and those kind of personal informations that you don't want to get out to the wrong people annually for all the employees of the organization. Also, they had the annual report and election of officers for the boards, advisory board and policy board and they're going to remain the same for next year. Little update on the radish patch roof. A new director they have out there seems to be doing a real good job and they're going to stick, stick with the radish patch for the mills on wheels and no further information about contributing to the repair of the roof or replacing the roof, so I can't pass any information about that on. Those are the main things we discussed yesterday.
Well, in terms of an executive session, the potential motion that's in front of us, should anyone care to make it, is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the status of a lawsuit pursuant to the attorney, attorney client privilege exception. This would be for 10 minutes, include the board and the counselor. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So move.
Second.
All right. Time's 9:40, we'd come out at 9:50. All in favor? All right, any votes? All right, we're back out of executive session. All right, we're back out of executive session, no actions taken, no decisions are made. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.